I was going to ask you, this is two to four.
I'm not sure if time has ever changed.
Just ten minutes. It's okay, I think, uh, you know, anything I should put first, but this is so technical.
It's on the calendar. Time's wrong, but it's on the calendar. Five to seven, two to four.
We should have four, that's a question. So you should show up at five, like I said.
Two to four.
Two to four.
How much clock I want to go by? Six to nine, let's do seven.
Let's go to one and two seven.
Let's do it. Good evening, everyone. Like to call to order the Tuesday, August 2nd, 2022 Planning Board Meeting. It's now seven o'clock PM. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of reflection. Robert, if you'd be so kind, just to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, if you please, take a moment of reflection. Thank you, everyone. This time, I'd like to establish voting members. Per the rules, since we have six regular members present, that being that Pam Duda will be joining us as a voting member this evening.
Ask for approval on that.
And that being said, I guess we do need approval. Do I have a motion?
Send me the second.
All right, all favor.
Aye.
There you go. Well, welcome aboard. Thank you, Tom, for keeping me in check. This time, additions or deletions to the agenda. Does anyone have anything they'd like to bring forward?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a recommendation. We accept the agenda as presented.
Do we have a second? All right, all in favor? Moving right along. Look at the amendments. If you already have not done so for the July 12th, 2022 meeting. And should you approve or have a motion, otherwise, please present.
I make a motion, we approve the amendments as presented.
Do it. All right, all in favor? Very good. Moving right along brings us to the only agenda item that we have. This could be the 2050 Comprehensive Plan Stormwater and Cluster Standards Implementation Committee Recommendations that will be revisited. Who do we have speaking this evening? Adam.
Hello, everyone. My name is Matthew Ray. I presented it to you guys last month and we would like to thank the board for allowing us to come in today to kind of clarify on some of the strategies that were presented last month for the Union County 2050 Comprehensive Plan. Just a quick overview on the background of the plan. It was adopted in August 2021. The board appointed six committees responsible for developing strategies to address the issues that were identified in the plan. The committee made recommendations, the board evaluated and made their own. And then later on, the commissioners will either approve, amend, and approve or deny the recommendations from here on out. And just as a reminder, these are more ideas, kind of the bigger picture concepts. The exact ordinance language and specifics of that will come before the board at a later time. This is more the framework for the ordinances to be laid out. Moving right along, as for the action that was taken last month by the planning board, the two committees that we'll be talking about today are the Stormwater Committee and the Cluster Standards in Rural Areas Committee. For the Stormwater Committee, the planning board denied the recommendations outright until additional information is presented. That's what we're here to do today. And the Cluster Standards Committee, you guys denied the environmental prioritization, the density bonus, and the minimum lot size flexibility for that one. A review of the strategies recommended in the Stormwater Committee. Unfortunately, the chairman, Josh Allen, couldn't be here to present these today, but I will be presenting them on his behalf. There were several strategies recommended by this committee with the ultimate goal of these strategies being to help reduce the effects of stormwater by doing some things like creating incentives to retrofit current developments, limiting clearcutting and mass grading, and adopting the Charlotte Stormwater Design Manual as a standard for the incorporated parts of Union County. The first concern that was kind of brought up last month that we want to discuss here today was about these two recommendations that were on the bottom of our list of recommendations. These were the ones that were not formally voted on by the committee. All we wanted to clarify on this one was that these were voted on by the committee, just not in a formal fashion. Unfortunately, we couldn't meet to do a vote, so we held a straw vote on them via email. Both of these recommendations were supported by the committee. However, they just weren't able to be formally recommended because we couldn't meet, have a quorum to actually do a vote. So with these two, the intent is that we do get a recommendation from the board on them. However, we were not able to get a formal recommendation from the committee. It's just an informal one. The next concern that was really brought forth is it the next concern that was really brought forth with the stormwater was about requiring the infrastructure without inspections. You guys thought it was a little short sighted and that the infrastructure would degrade over time. As some clarification on that, the Union County 2050 Plan did consider implementing a stormwater utility that could own and inspect stormwater infrastructure. This was, this recommendation was not approved by the planning board or county commissioners, but they did want to create some kind of standards that were involved with them just without, without that really maintenance and inspection portion of it. That, that, that portion of it was denied by them. The, just a little bit of background information about what it would be like if we were to set up some kind of that thing in terms of the scale and the cost, it would really depend on what exactly that scale would be at, whether it be through the homeowner's association or commercial industrial properties as well as residential. And developing a utility with the capability to own the infrastructure would definitely require a fee per property. But again, this, this was something that was not recommended during the initial planning phase by the planning board and the board of commissioners. And then moving along to some of the concerns, you guys just wanted a little bit of clarification about the Charlotte Stormwater Design Manual. So we went back and we did a little bit of research on it. We, you asked for a little bit of clarifications in some of the municipalities that were already using them. I went through the municipalities' UDOs and found that six of them currently reference it in some way or another, five of them using it directly. And then Waxaw developed their own and used the Charlotte Stormwater Design Manual as kind of a template to develop theirs. And just a little bit about the experience of some of the municipalities in using the design manual in their developments. It's been described as being, having durable and effective standards. Developers are already familiar with it, which was a pretty big selling point, kind of universality from the people that I talked about. It makes things just easier for everybody because it's a little bit cohesive. And it helps plan for some of the worst case scenarios. Rather than just a minimum standard, it pushes you to really try to focus on how bad things could get when you're designing so that you don't have as many problems down the road. And with just a little more background on the design manual, I would like to bring up the county stormwater engineer, Brian Hawkins.
Good evening. I'm Brian Hawkins. I'm the stormwater engineer for the county. I was asked to come and speak to you a little bit more about, about how this implementation of the Charlotte Design Manual would change how we do things from how we do currently without, without the manual. A little bit of history. It was initially published in 1993. It's been revised and updated through 2014. It's important to point out that this manual does not address water quality designs for any of these stormwater features. That's still, that's still directed by the state publications. And for, for the county at least, it would still be, it would continue to be reviewed and approved by the state for water quality, specifically water quality requirements. Before I get into how it's different than, than what we do now, I guess it's important to explain what, what we do now. We don't have a design manual as it is. As a result, basically any engineering analysis that's provided to my office has to be reviewed as if, does it, does it meet general engineering's, general engineering practice, which means I could get five different analyses from five different engineers that are all slightly different, all for the same project. And they're, they're all, it's my job to interpret whether or not they meet general engineering practice. And that's all because we don't have a current design manual. By implementing this, the Charlotte Design Manual, that would give me a kind of a boilerplate of, you want to get approval, here's how you do it. You, you give it to me in this format with these general parameters and, and you'll get your approval. Generally speaking, going through the examples, and that, that, that's the, the big one is that it standardizes design parameters for all the design features. Now, the designs, the, the design information that's provided in the manual is nothing different than what we already require. It's not, it's not creating new infrastructure. It's not requiring new ponds or new swales, new, new requirements for anything that we don't currently require. It's just giving them essentially a roadmap to, this is, this is how you, this is the format that you provided to me and I can, I can approve. The other, the other examples is in a simplified staff review because now I'd, I'd be looking at one, one methodology as opposed to five different methodologies from whatever engineers are looking at it. And it eliminates manipulation of variables used in the analysis. The reason that's in there is because general engineering practice shows that certain analyses may use certain coefficients or variables that are, that are based on a range. Whereas the Charlotte Manual will specify a very specific number that they have to use for, for different land covers or roughness coefficients, things like that. The, the reason it's important is because if, if the range, if, if I have to go based on standard engineering practice, I, I have to accept numbers that are placed in that range, which could result in one, one designer coming up with an analysis that might show that the runoff coming from a site is half of what another designer might require. And it puts me in a bad position that now I have to fight a fight that I really shouldn't have to fight if I had, if I had a design manual that specified, this is how you do it. And that's, that's, that's primarily what the, the importance of, of adopting the design. Either adopt a design manual that exists and has been refined or create our own, which would, would be a significant undertaking, seeing how this, this one, this one is already being used by multiple municipalities in the county. And they're primarily the municipalities that are under development now or, or highly being, being developed currently. And we just kind of fill in the hole between these counties, these municipalities. And the fact that we don't have a design manual just kind of leaves us open to getting in trouble with those municipalities in a sense, so.
Before, Matthew, before we come back up, does anyone have any questions for Brian?
Brian, I'd like to ask you a question. First of all, thanks for being here tonight. I'm looking at the slide that says history of CSDM. It was initially published in 1993. It was updated in 2014. It doesn't address water quality regulations and design features. So what we're doing, we're saying we're going to use a manual that has not been updated since 2014. And so therefore, we don't have it, this is my interpretation. Mr. Chair, my interpretation. So therefore, we don't have any reason to try to do a better job than 2014 information.
Well, this is, this is all, this is all how various, various swales, pipes, conveyance systems, how they're being designed. It's, it's, it's more of a refinement of providing a very specific way that the analysis should be done. It's not, we're not revolutionizing how, how a, a storm system is, is designed. And because it has nothing to do with regulation, it's all about, this is, this is how, you know, your, your regulations are set up over here. This is how you, you show that you meet those regulations. So it's, it's not really, it's not really something that can, until new technologies are developed, there's, there's really no, no way to refine it any more than it really has been refined.
Do you see any lack of inefficiencies in that design manual?
There are inefficiencies, no, but there are certain criteria in that manual that would have to be updated specific to our geological region.
Well then, why don't we present something to the commissioners with that updated?
I'm sorry.
So I, I would say that that will likely happen, but that's going to come more in the phase when we get into specific ordinance. Like when you look at the municipalities and how they've implemented it, they all basically say, we're implementing the Charlotte Stormwater Design Manual with X, Y, Z changes that are almost all based on what you were talking about, about the
Geological differences.
Again, Mr. Chair, this is my.
If, if I might, so what, what I feel it, it might come down to is we, we could develop our own manual. Now, in, in order to do a specific manual for Union County, we don't have to have resources in-house to do that. We, we would have to go out and hire consultants. In fact, I think we priced that one time, it was slightly above, what around a hundred thousand dollars?
It's, that's pretty close.
Yeah. So it's about a hundred thousand dollars to, to, to create our own manual. Charlotte is, is right next door. They're, they're, they are similar in Union County. There, there are some slight differences, like Brian mentioned. Some, some of the geologic formations that exist in the county are a little bit different. But we're close enough to where our rainfall patterns, the types of materials that you would use are, are very similar. So what we would do is adopt that manual and then make some slight revisions to that as we saw that they were needed, which would be much less cheaper than trying to, and, and much, and much faster than trying to develop one completely in-house.
Well, you answered my question. But my recommendation is that that be put into this presentation. Because I would never would have asked the question if that had been in here. I'd have read it. I'm not trying to be hard-nosed.
That, that, that's, that's, that's a, that's a good, that's a good point. I appreciate that.
Please understand, I'm, I'm not, I'm not trying to be hard-nosed by any shape, form, or fashion. Thank you, sir.
I have a question. Um, thank you for being here. So what I'm getting out of this from the benefit, to me, it sounds like it's a cookbook or like you said, it's a, a plan for you all inside to be able to work probably more efficiently and more consistently with what's happened in the municipalities.
Yes.
So you're not creating the wheel, starting to create the wheel? So I'm, I'm hearing that the benefit is kind of internal to your department for productivity. Because it's not going to address the regulations. It's not going to address the water quality, correct? It's just going to make it easier, faster, better?
It is, but it's also going to ensure more consistency amongst the designs that, that come out of. Because, because you may have, you may have one, you know, significant developer who's, who's following one set of rules. But in, in fact, I get a lot of people who do follow the Mecklenburg rules currently because it's, it's out there and we don't have one. They may, they may provide an analysis that, that shows one thing and the neighboring community may come, come in with a, a different engineer
Totally understand.
who's, who's looking to save a little money here and there. And they're, they're going to manipulate the analysis. So you're getting.
So you're trying to do apples, it's apples, oranges. You're trying to do apples, apples.
That's right, that's right.
And you know what, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Co-Chairman, what I'm seeing with this, and I'm jumping ahead here, is this is the other thing that we are going to talk about next, is actually having the investigation of the infrastructure and stuff like that. Even though that this is a manual, it's a, it's kind of a cookbook, it's going to make it easier that everybody toes the line to be able, if we do decide to eventually have somebody to do inspection, then you have something that you can check and balance. So, thank you for that.
So my understanding from our last meeting, the reason why this board rejected it primarily was because there's no enforcement mechanism.
Exactly.
It's essentially like having a number of laws on the book and no police department.
Checks and checks.
Now, to, to that point, currently there are stormwater structures that are designed and implemented. There's no enforcement mechanism.
We, we require stormwater structures primarily for water quantity purposes. Basically reduction, runoff reductions for various storm events for whatever type of developments going on. We, we require them to install those. And we, we do inspect it through construction for the purpose of making sure that it complies with the, the design. But once, once it's done, once it's, it's in operation, the only time we, we really have resource to go out and inspect it is if somebody complains about it not operating properly. Then I can, I can send them.
Wouldn't necessarily fix that portion, but it wouldn't make it any worse.
Exactly, that's right.
Leads me to another question, and Ms. Duda hit on this a little bit, as far as it appears to streamline review and approval. How many plan reviewers do you currently have to look at these types of plans and structures?
Me.
Okay.
Well, now, now I do have, we do have a consultant that, that when I, when I get overloaded or there's some large projects come in, we do have a consultant and a process where I can, I can forward that on to a consultant to help out. But there's sort of a limit, you know, there's a limitation on how much I can do that, so.
They have a cap on how much you spend each year on, on consultants. So that is, what, what would that usually be? Just an average, about four reviews?
Our, the current amount that we have, it depends on how big the review is, but I'd, I'd average probably about five.
Okay, to that end, what, what is, again, my goal is to try to eliminate government red tape wherever I, I see. And this is, appears to be, it may be an opportunity. What is the current backlog time for review?
Typically, I'm given about six weeks to do an initial review, meaning I haven't seen anything about it since. I'm all right, I'm, I'm over, I'm about eight, eight to 10 weeks.
Should this be implemented, what do you feel it would do to your review time?
Well, given a little bit of time and, and, I mean, obviously if this, if this is going in the right direction and I get accustomed to it before it actually gets implemented, it, I, I think it would probably shave, maybe not half, but, but a, a good portion of that review down because now I can look at a, a specific review and say, I, I immediately know whether or not it's, it's, it's in the format that I'm looking for. That, that I can, I can actually go through a, a review, cursory review to, to kick it back out, to get them to revise it so that it is easier to review much faster. So, probably about half, I'd, I'd say close to half.
So with that in mind, should this be implemented, do you feel as though you could eliminate the need for a consultant to step in and therefore save the county some money?
It depends on how, whether, if, if growth continues at what it's at.
Well, let's assume just for a second, current, current rates.
I'd hate to commit to that, but I think I think that's definitely a possibility.
So essentially, allow you to do more with less going forward?
That's right, yeah.
And just, just, and we, we reevaluate that consultant agreement every four years?
I think it was every two years.
Every two years, okay. So we reevaluate, yeah, that's right, every two years and then we have a one-year review. So we reevaluate that. We've only had that for
Three, three or four years, yeah.
It's not, it's not been around that long. For, for a long time, the backlog is much longer than what it is today. We got that slowed down with, with the consultant. But we, we would, we said we would reevaluate it soon. We still do.
Any other questions for Brian at this time?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Do you have anything? Go ahead. Yeah, I'm, I was not here last month, so I, and I apologize, but, you know, I'm, I am a strategic planner professionally and I want to walk through this with you if you don't mind, and you're more than welcome to chime in. When, when we're looking at this document and implementing the key components to the, the, this committee recommended six items.
Okay.
One of which is the adoption of the Charlotte Manual, which with some caveats, I get because now we're creating a standard that everybody gets, every developer, every engineer, every town, everybody knows what the playbook is. When it comes into you, it's formatted and then the, I, I get, and there's huge efficiencies in that. But let's back up for a minute. The very first one says, we need to create incentives to retrofit development by increasing funding. What does that mean? And who's going to increase funding? And where is funding coming from?
Right, so this, this probably, probably switch after. Yeah, I was just, I was just going to come back to this and after we let Brian sit down.
Well, we're going to go through all six, so just stay there.
Yeah, to discuss these, so.
And I don't want to take all night doing this, but I want to just hit the hotspot.
Yeah, you're okay. So the incentive program, this is actually already in a way happening through the Soil and Water Conservation District, which, correct me if I'm wrong, is brought down. We have a district from a state program that puts out grant money and stuff like that, that people can apply for to come have retrofitting done on their properties to reduce stormwater. One of the, and the county already partially funds some of that ourselves. We, we put money into this program.
Let me, let me help you. The, the, Union County was in a joint services agreement with the town of Weddington to fix the six, six mile creek where it goes under Antioch Church Road due to the overfill when they built the ball field. I was on the Weddington Town Council and ended up costing, the town's portion of that bill was about a million and a half dollars, which means the county's portion that you were around. It, it was a FEMA issue. So one of the questions I'm going to ask tonight is how much have we engaged the FEMA standard into this, which is the 50-year flood? But if we're talking about increasing funding, before I'm going to vote yes, I need to know where that funding's coming from. If it's a Union County taxpayer, I can't support that. If it's coming from the state or from outside grants, we're going to go back to staff, who's writing grant applications? Because I don't think we have people sitting around here with the time to write grant applications. And what do we anticipate? The overall cost, i.e. the utilization from communities and neighborhoods to go back and retrofit?
So the, the August part, was, was a slightly di- different issue.
Well, we were in suit, so we had to deal with it, but.
So, so there, there's actually a project right now, I don't know if it's wrapped up, but Solid Water went out and did some that, that was a grant program that, that they got some money to do, basically a lot of down debris, debris to wash down the stream that caused flooding on, on people's property. They went and got a grant to pull that out. They had to move it out of the floodplain. You know, we're specifically talking about stormwater requirements here. We actually, our floodplain rules, which is kind of in a different section of, of the ordinance. We actually, our floodplain rules, which is kind of a different section of the ordinance, but yes, they are related. We actually don't allow building or fill in the floodplain. We've got very strict floodplain regulations in account. We're stricter, we have higher standards than the state minimum.
And we've just expanded ours, so I get that, I'll go back. Where does the increased funding come from?
So most of this money would come from federal, state, or municipal.
I wouldn't commit to that, it's going to be government money, so it would be a combination of state grants, it would be a combination of local money.
Yeah, and honestly, any kind of state or federal grant you get, there is likely to be a local match requirement, so they're probably not going to give you money if you don't.
I remember.
Is this above and beyond what's currently going on with the Soil and Water District, Conservation District?
Yes, so this recommendation's essentially asking for an increase in what already exists through that.
All right.
And the question is, I'm sorry, how are we going to, what's the strategy to increase the funding? So let's assume it's a dollar-for-dollar match, and it's usually not, it's a 50 cents, but what's, I don't want to sign off on something that says we're going to increase funding, and the funding does exist, and then we have to go to the Union County taxpayers to make up for the, and if you cross 84 and look at the Hollister side of Six Mile, it's a disaster down there. I'm just using that as an example.
Sure. So honestly, I don't know how much, you know, the total home relative out there at the federal and state level. It exists, we do use it from time to time. If we use more, obviously, yes, there would be a greater local match requirement, and that funding would be up to, that funding level would be up to court. You would pass them what they were comfortable funding. If, I mean, they could say, you know, but they may say, you know, we want to leave it at the current level. I think what the committee did was, they looked at this, and they said, well, yeah, we understand that there's a current amount there, we think there should be more. The committee didn't say what that amount should be, they just said, we should do more. Especially in, I guess, subdivisions that maybe don't have stormwater facilities now or commercial development, presumably the damage.
I'll wait.
So you want to retrofit current developments, so we know that there's issues with current developments. How did that happen?
Well, there's developments that have been around Union County since before there were any regulations, any regulations, and a lot of them...
There's ones that are like putting, like, you know, maybe a couple of years ago, that, like, for instance, going back to Optimus Park, you got the Highlands behind it. That thing floods every time it rains, it comes out of the Highlands, and Optimus Park gets flooded. They've lost walking trails, they've lost bridges because of it, but nothing's done by it.
I'm not familiar with the issue out there.
Yeah, I mean, I would say, as just a general note on why this is happening with current developments, it's just a lot of different factors. Getting into the exact reason would take a lot of analysis and research for us to go back and figure out, but there's a lot of different reasons, whether it's, one of the recommendations in here meant to help that is the limiting of clearcutting of land and increasing the runoff coefficients, because we're basically treating scraped land like it's not, when we're determining how much water's running off of it. That's one of the reasons that it's happening. Just creeks and stuff getting flooded, like you were talking about, when we were talking about the retrofitting that's currently happening. When that happens, you're going to get flooding if no one's coming to clean up those creeks, you know? So there's a lot of different reasons that the flooding is happening in those current developments.
And very well could be, I mean, I know where Highlands is, what it is, it's just, you know, above, so anytime you have development, you are going to have increased runoff, because you are going from, that was woods before, you're going from, and a little bit of field, I think, so you're going from bad condition to, you know, rooftops, asphalt, sidewalks, driveways, and you do, you know, that development, I think, did require some level of detention, I think it was a 25-year storm, but, yeah, if you have 50-year storm, some of that's getting bypassed, and it's going around, and downstream properties unfortunately are flooded, so, see, yeah, that's likely due to the rules that are in place now, to, you know, two and 25-year storms, so anytime you get a higher year storm event, that water is going to bypass around the detention basin, and it will go on.
Right, and the frequency and intensity of those storms has been increasing as time goes on.
Mr. Berry?
So who fixes them?
Well, I mean, that one will have to be designed, and you'd have to hire somebody to design it, to implement it. I don't know what the...
But if the Highlands doesn't do anything about it, they wash their hands, and they don't care, then what? Then what happens?
Probably nothing.
Well, that's why I agree with the chairman, that there should be some kind of checkpoints, somebody should be hired to go out and check these things, and see if they're running correctly.
That was a strategy that was considered to the conference plan, and it was not recommended by, or any committee, it was not recommended by the planning board, it was not recommended by the board commissioners, and it would require if the all properties in the area and not Union County were to implement.
Which takes me to my next question.
Yeah.
And I'm looking at this...
I knew he was getting warmed up.
You know, it's interesting, because we have a specific case that this deals with, and I'm so familiar with it, and I know this is not the only, that Six Mile Creek and Antioch Church area is not the only place in the county, and one of the remediation pieces to that was with the widening of 84, because they're going to put two more culverts in, and I jokingly told the FEMA engineer, "That's great, but all you did was put all the water on the other side, because Hollister, that basin from there all the way to the other end, through Hollister, is just as bad." So if you're not going to clean the whole thing out, how much have you done? Anyway, I'm, my pages aren't numbered, but it says, "The planning board felt requiring infrastructure without inspections was short-sighted," that page, bullet number one, 2050 considered, 2050 plan considered implementing stormwater utility that could own and inspect stormwater infrastructure. What is that utility? Would we create it? Who would fund it? So it'd be funded like the enterprise fund for water and sewer?
So at one time...
Except it'd have to have taxpayers fund it, because there are no users.
You would have a fee, so the way, the way most communities do that in North Carolina is there, there's stormwater fee.
That was just increased pretty significantly in Mecklenburg County. You know where I'm going.
I do. There's a fee that's added to your tax bill, and it's usually...
Which is, a fee, by the way, is still a tax. I don't want to get caught in that trap.
I get it, I get it, and it's on all residents.
Correct.
That was...
Now, is that a recommendation in here?
No.
No, no.
That was considered as part of, so when the conflict started, there were various committees, when the development of the conflict started, there were various committees that thought about what we should do, whatever the stormwater. The utility was an idea, but that idea never, it never made it past the coordinating committee, the planning board considered, and they also said no, and ultimately, the board and county commissioners said no.
Perfect, so we're not going to create a utility, which means we're not funding any organization to enforce, right?
Correct.
So we're going to create a standard we cannot support, and a standard at which we cannot fund, right? Because we basically said, short of grants, which would require some local taxpayer matching, so I'm, other than creating a unified ordinance for developers, which I get 100%, everybody's got the same format, nothing else in here makes a lot of sense to me. And either I'm missing it, or I've read this too many times in the last three days, and my eyes are glassing over.
So there were several strategies, I guess, that the Stormwater Committee considered, and I don't want to commingle all of them, I mean, some of them do, would work together. One of them, down at the bottom, where you see there are two strategies that were identified, I said before, the Highlands of Weddington, it was developed due to a 25-year detention.
And we had two 50-year events?
Yeah, so one of the strategies was, let's increase that to 50 years, to the 10-50 year, that was one. Another was that, what was the rest of that one? Using the stormwater design manual. And then another idea, again, was to look at funding to retrofit this. So the design manual in the 50-year storm would apply to new development, so that would be any new subdivision coming in, that would apply to old stuff. I think the idea for looking at grants was to, okay, well, we're going to fix the new stuff that's coming in, but we've got a lot of old stuff out there that's broken. So how about we think about some strategies that we could try to fix some of the old stuff? And that's where the grant idea came from, was to retrofit existing facilities. So maybe there's a pipe in a development that's broken, or it's not working correctly, and needs to be replaced.
So I'm with you, and I'll stop until we get to clusters after this, and then we'll do this again with clusters. Sorry. The, how many legacy neighborhoods have flooding problems? Because are we trying to fix a problem that, and now we are familiar with one, but how prevalent is this issue countywide, and are we fixing a problem that doesn't really exist on a standard?
Well, the retrofit of current development is not, Soil and Water Conservation District is not intended to repair infrastructure in a sense of pipes and things like that, it's about smaller, more organic improvements, like putting in rain gardens, or fixing a...
Putting in a rain garden?
Yes.
Is that what I'm thinking, or is that an engineering term? It's a real wet garden?
It means designed, yeah, it's a wet yard, designing a little, and so it's, so as a combination of the soil and plants that are there, it's absorption capacity is increasing.
Gotcha.
Also, improving the banks of streams. Well, low-cost improvements, not like get a backhoe out there and replace a pipe type of projects.
Clearing the floodplain, getting the debris out of the floodplain.
Similar to what the county did with canoes and chainsaws, going down the creeks and chopping up the trees that are jamming up the bridge culverts, and bridges and culverts. That's the type of projects that could be envisioned through this program, not necessarily such-and-such neighborhood has a pipe that's blown out, and they didn't save for it through their HOA dues to repair. That's not what we're talking about here.
Sorry, I just, I got rolling.
No, I want you to roll, and since we're talking about stormwater, what about abandoned dams in neighborhoods?
I don't think they're accessible.
Okay.
Of course, I'm not commissioners, but if we didn't want to touch them...
Nobody wants to touch them, so...
We didn't want to touch them, not our dams, we don't own them, we want them to own.
This is Duda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a blanket statement, and I know it's related to this, but not related to this. The blanket statement is, is I think a lot of the financial burden moving forward for the future, I know we can't fix the past, would be if North Carolina would get an impact tax on the builders and the developers, to help share the financial burden of the growth. I know that's a statewide commitment, but it has to start somewhere, and I'm just putting it out there that perhaps we should explore lobbying for that. And some of you might agree with me or not agree with me, but I'm just seeing from a future standpoint with the level of growth that's going on, because stormwater is one of them, but we also have, you know, the school situation, everything else. And Patrick brought up the fact that, you know, there's a lot of financial burden going on the residents, the citizens, and I'm just throwing it out there that we tend to do this, we tend to be in a loop, but perhaps we should start looking at bigger fish.
You know the story on impact fees? We'll talk about it after the meeting, but, okay.
All right. Are there any other questions or comments on any of the suggestions here from stormwater besides what we've talked about with the retrofitting, stormwater design? Are there any other questions on what else is here before we move on to cluster standards?
Before we move on to cluster, I think this is something that's best that we have some discussion internally and come to some sort of consensus. Again, I don't want to move forward and have this lost in the mix, I think there's some good discussion, I think there's been some great points brought up. So anyone that wishes to speak, you don't need permission, please talk amongst yourselves, let's get to the heart of this and come up with a satisfactory conclusion.
Can I ask another question?
Absolutely.
Does this stormwater committee still exist? Or have you all dispensed of this committee?
All six committees are completely worked.
Yes.
Can that committee be recalled?
It would require the commissioners to do that.
No, I mean, the commissioners never officially disbanded them, so the committee's still...
Or does staff now recreate? I mean, if we come back to you today and say, Dan Berry, I'm not satisfied with the response from the committee, we've given you some pretty, I've given you some indication about where I stand and some questions, I would rather vote on a comprehensive statement from you than saying no to this piece, yes to this piece. What do y'all need us to do to help you fit? Yours is easy, right? As far as I'm concerned, I get that, I understand it, but all the other pieces to this, I want, you know, a better answer on money, right? I can't sit here and say, oh, let's do all of this stuff, and, you know, the fees will be absorbed by the taxpayers and, or the neighborhood association if they own it. I'm very uncomfortable with kind of that blanket statement there, I'd want to know a lot, and then I'd want to know what it costs. If you come into the county commission and say, "We want to create this entity that is going to fix these things over the next five years, we estimate it's going to cost $5 million, we're going to get grant money, you could count on a $2.5 million budget request over the next five or 10 years to subsidize that grant." I mean, those are the kind of questions that we need to be able to...
And if I may, I understand where you are coming from with that, but that is only pertaining to the first bullet point, really. None of these other bullet points require additional funding from the county on any level. The limiting clearcutting and mass grading dirt development by keeping stream buffers open in continuous forested open areas, as well as the supporting open space and environmental protection strategies from the cluster and open space committees, those are meant to be supportive of other parts of the plan that were presented last month. Other parts of the plan presented open space requirements for the cluster standards and for the open space in rural areas, which is essentially any new development above 10 lots, I believe, is what we set the minimum at, within rural parts of the county, as designated by the county's new land use plan. So those, right off the bat, are more just supporting statements, saying that we think that these things should happen, they can happen through these mechanisms of having more open space in developments. More is supporting other parts of the plan. Go ahead.
I get what you're saying, my question was, do we want to approve this piece meal, or send it back and let them come back with a comprehensive response and approve the whole thing?
I don't think that the committee, I mean, they, I think they made their recommendations, and I think at this point, they're looking for the planning board, because the board of commissioners is going to hear both, they're going to hear the committee's recommendation and the planning board's recommendation, and they're going to make a decision. So, yeah, I would say go through it piece by piece and say, yeah, I like this, I don't like this.
Okay, thank you.
And honestly, that's what happened on the initial conflict, but the planning board went through, and piece by piece, and said, and that's ultimately, I think, pretty much all gathered up.
Mr. Chairman, talking about the manual when we had that discussion, I totally understand that, and I think that makes sense for the internal staff, that to be the consistency and the productivity. The part that, I guess, concerns me, especially since we're talking about historical issues that are happening with the infrastructure and whatnot with the stormwater, is I think if we're going to throw money, extra money into the retrofit and stuff, we should also find money to have somebody to do the checks and balances, to start looking, surveying, or what I mean, sorry.
Inspecting.
Inspecting, doing inspection, because, I mean, if you're going to throw it one way for future, you should finish the loop. And maybe it wasn't approved, you know, previously, but now looking at this, and it's becoming a bigger deal, especially with all the growth that's going on, perhaps now we should throw the money in and do that.
So here's where my head's at. I do acknowledge that stormwater is a problem, flooding is a problem, the places that you two have mentioned are... Our, our stormwater guide or lack thereof is definitely an issue. The same time, I tend to agree with Mr. Berry that this is not the time to do anything that requires additional funds. I, I'm not really excited about the incentives at this time, especially going into a recession. Some of the other challenges we're seeing in the county, increased water and sewer rates for a number of reasons. There's a lot of good items on here. I, I'm frustrated that there's no enforcement mechanism, as Ms. Duda said. However, that would require a considerable amount of money to make that work. I, I live that in my professional life where we deal with that. And that this does come with some exceptional cost for the, the investigation and maintenance of these facilities. So I'm not very excited with anything that would add to additional taxpayer burden. But someone recently had posted something that I read, how the, the perfect is the enemy of the good. And to me, just thinking out loud, I'd say remove the incentives. I know that there's no enforcement mechanism, but you currently don't have an enforcement mechanism. Everything else I see on these bullet points would be a positive. And then you've got a positive as far as speeding things along for plan review and taking some burden off of staff. So that's just where my head's at.
Can I ask one more question, then I'll be quiet?
Absolutely.
I've said that three times now. Enhanced upstream, the very last bullet, required enhanced stormwater mitigation upstream for developments that are upstream, is that to be provided by the developer? Is that what you're saying there?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Feel free to discuss, don't, don't think you're going to offend me if you disagree with me. Sir.
In anticipation of the discussion about the inspections and enforcement, I did reach out to a couple of towns that have adopted the stormwater. Yeah, that, that, that's an issue, that's an ongoing issue with this one. We have no enforcement mechanism. A lot of places put these things in their ordinance and they don't have a way of enforcement. What a couple of them do is they actually put the burden on the adjacent neighborhood. And there's a stormwater requirement. They put the burden on the neighborhood going forward. Each year, they have to produce a report from an engineer to say, this is still functioning the way it's designed, the way it was originally designed. Now, let's not say there's not some staff time that had to take place. Wedding to news is a consultant, they don't have a staff stormwater person. But that report gets turned in, somebody would have to look at it to make sure it's reasonable and, you know, makes sense. You know, that, that's an option that could be looked at.
Where's that precedent been set before?
That's the way it does now.
Are there any other examples that you're aware of?
I believe that's what Marvin does too. I, I was only able to, in the short period of time, I was only able to do that one or two.
No, it's.
Worked a couple of patients. Now, that's not to say that there's still some, a little bit of a burden there because there's still somebody that has to look at it, and maybe Brian, and so.
You framed the perfect question for Brian. So Brian, if we save you all this time by implementing the stormwater manual. Know where I'm going here. Really, well, how feasible is it that that's an approach like what, what Lee said would, would be viable without requiring the need for additional staff and additional funding?
Well, when it's a report generated by a, another engineering firm and then signed by an engineer who's, who's done an evaluation, an ASB, a recording on ASB, upon, I mean, basically, you, you kind of have to rely on that engineer's expertise to say, yes, he's qualified to do that, to make that certification. I mean, there's, there's certain things that I, that I rely on to provide now. When it comes to, I don't have a survey crew, I can't, I can't go out to a, to a development and evaluate in, in birds of, of pipes and whatnot. So I have to rely on, on those engineers to provide, to get their own ASBs and certify that it was built based on the records.
But you're talking about a licensed engineer who is stamping this and putting their livelihood on the line, saying that this is correct.
That's right.
I guess the, the burden that I was thinking about was staying on top of folks who may have actually.
Well, then you get into a question of, well, first off, what's the legal mechanism for going retroactive? Can you even do it? And then what fines could you impose? What, what if they say no? So again, is it even viable? You could have a great idea, if you can't enforce it, what does it matter?
Right, and that, that would, I have to be, you know, stressed out if, if that was something. Fortunately, if that was something the board of county commissioners wanted to do, that would have to be developed. I mean, essentially that, that would exist inside the ordinance.
You're going to make fun of me, so I won't.
If they would be in violation of the ordinance, now.
All right, Dan. He's got another one, come on, bring it up.
If, since all this construction is bonded with the county, because we're not talking about municipal zoning, then can we use bond forfeitures as the club?
We're only allowed to.
Now, those, I'm thinking of road bond specifically, but.
We're only, since state legislature changed the rules on bonds a number of years ago, it used to be that you could hold, you hold construction bonds and then you can hold a maintenance bond.
Yep.
And specifically for roads, we held that maintenance bond until NCDOT came in and just wrote it. The legislature took the ability for the municipalities and counties in North Carolina to have maintenance bonds in wait several years ago. So you can only hold a construction bond.
Thank you.
Further discussion?
I have, I have a question about enhanced stormwater mitigation, the last bullet point. When a development is upstream of known recurring flood areas, should we, that's kind of vague. Should we be concerned about the vagueness of that language? Or should there be more specific recommendations on what that needs to be?
I think at this time, we're supposed to be federally general. And then there's, if, should we move forward, it would get more comprehensive and more detail oriented.
Is this the framework?
Yeah, that, that, that would be a future ordinance amendment that would have to come back.
If I may, I look at this whole slide with strategies, kind of like we were wanting a year and a half ago with the conference of plan, which came to you. We had a range of strategies that the commissioners could have adopted or completely struck as issues to even consider. Like, they might have said, nah, stormwater's not an issue, make that whole thing go away. If we had gone through this whole endeavor, we would have wasted six to nine months of work just coming up with these strategies, just to find out that they didn't want it. The same thing holds with the idea of mitigating additionally when there's, when there's known flooding downstream. That's something that we want to research. We want that direction now, so that when Brian and high-paid consultants come up with those strategies, we don't come up to you or the county commissioners and have you say, this was an initiative, again. So we're essentially minimizing risk to know where this is a, a concept we should be working on.
Mr. Chair. I'm going to jump off on a deep end here, and I'll probably be tarred and feathered for this, but I believe the last meeting I said that this board was asked to approve this without the approval of the committee, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Listening to everybody, there's been some good comments out here. I think that if we approve this, it's the seven of us, whatever it is, has agreed on everything, when the committee itself couldn't agree on it, because they couldn't vote on it, for whatever reason. Do what, Charlie?
Do they have a straw vote?
Yes, and, and the first, what, six points were voted on in a formal vote. It's just the last two that were not voted on formally, but they were voted on just a straw poll.
Were they approved, Mr. Pollard?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, that's my fault, I missed that.
Yeah.
The conversation. But I, what I don't want to do is take and lower the standard of expectation of the next committee that comes up to do the next comp plan, et cetera, by saying, hey, we really don't have to do anything because the previous board in 2022 passed a plan and we didn't have to vote on it, where it's official, where the vote is official. It's like when this vote here, whatever we vote, it's official. We know who voted for and who voted against. And right now, straw vote doesn't tell me anything, other than there was people that raised hands and, and things like that. And, but you go to these other committees and they agreed wholeheartedly to submit it the way they had it, instead of saying, let the planning board. And I've got a problem with that, Lee, Bjorn, Matthew, I really do. I've got a problem with it, and I don't know how I can support it. I'm just being totally honest with you. Looks like to me we're lowering our standards, and I apologize for making that statement.
Well, thank you for your input.
I'm just not happy with this status quo.
Do what, Patrick?
I'm not happy with the status quo, that it's not to be inspected after it's completed. Well, that's like building a house. I mean, you get inspections all the time. Why isn't this inspected?
Well, they're inspecting during construction.
Well.
Just like a house.
We, we, we do that, so it is inspected. But once it's built, once it's finished, just like a house, there's no, nobody's going out there to check on it. Just like nobody comes out to your house to check, to make sure that it's still being building code. It's likely your house doesn't be building code. There's probably things that have happened in your house that codes change or you've done some modifications to your house that may not be code. So, so yeah, it is inspected before it's, before that, that bondage really. We do hold a second bond on stormwater facilities. Before we give that back, we make sure that it's still part of the plan. But I think the issue is home loaning inspection. We don't, we don't go visit the site yearly or monthly or anything to make sure that it's still. After, after we've inspected it, to make sure it's built right, we don't go back.
Well, I appreciate Vice Chairman Fisher's comments regarding the expectations for the committees. At the same time, I feel as though we have an obligation, not only to the commissioners, but to the future boards, the future planning boards, to be decisive here and render a decision, good, bad, or indifferent. And, and maybe the buck didn't stop there, but I personally feel it should stop here.
Would you like a motion? Kit this moving?
If you feel, hey, if the spirit moves you.
The, I'm going to assume that the references in here to fifty year are also compliant with the new FEMA standard. So I'm just going to make that assumption. I'll make the motion that we adopt, I guess that's the right phrase, and I'm looking at this page, recommended strategies, bullets two, three, four, five, with the amendment to be updated to current practices, because it's 2014 was the date that that document was written. I am absolutely confident standards have changed in eight years, or six years, eight years. And then bullet six, so omitting bullet number one.
Do we want to address bullets seven and eight as well that were voted on in a straw vote? That's part of your motion.
Since I haven't read them.
So that was essentially changing it from twenty-five years.
Which is what I just said, and I'm assuming that is consistent with the FEMA standard, right? And then, so yes, we'll add that one. Requiring professors to exceed one acre disturbance. Add fifty years.
So, so that's basically.
It's non-perm, it's the non, it's the runoff rates, right?
Yeah, and, and it's, it's, if you exceed an acre, you have to do two and twenty-five. Right, right now, the two and twenty-five year ordinance only exists for cluster subdivision. This would essentially make it applicable to all types of development, not just cluster development.
Is that including roadways? So that's including the roadways. So if we take an acre out of the development for curb and gutter and the street, that full acre, then it, it's required to me.
If it were an acre disturbance, then yes, you have to do stormwater.
I'm okay with it.
So essentially, I think what you're doing is you're saying everything from the first.
So. And add an amendment to the, one on the Charlotte manual to make sure it's consist, yeah, we need to clean it up to make sure it's current.
To clarify, we have a motion on the floor for bullet points two, three, four, five, with the amendment that we bring it to current standards, six, seven, and eight. Mr. Berry, do you have a second?
Second.
I second.
All in favor? All opposed? Are you opposed to your own?
No, no, I thought she, I thought you said.
Oh, all, all in favor, please?
I'm looking at her, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
She's better looking than me, I get it.
This is in favor of.
This is in favor of. Not opposed? Thank you very much.
Okay. Moving right along to the cluster standards in rural areas where water and sewer are present. Again, the chairman, Nathaniel Grove, couldn't be here to present for this month. I'll be presenting it instead on the board here. You can see the items that were approved and denied from last meeting. As it stands, the ones that were approved were just a reaffirmation of gross versus net in terms of calculation. The low impact amenities section, which is removing active recreation, like pools, tennis courts, from being allowed in open space designation, and instead restricting that specifically to passive recreation, like trails. And then the monitoring for effectiveness in terms of us as a department monitoring these standards at a five-year interval to see if they are achieving the goals that they're set out to do. Really, all we were asking for with this committee, or with this set of recommendations, was some clarification. This is essentially what would be going to the county commissioners the way that these were approved previously. These would be the current standards as they sit right now with cluster standards. No density bonus added, no increase in open, open space percentage added, no decrease in lot sizes added. The only real addition to the cluster standards would be the addition of the only low impact amenities being allowed in the open space protection, which sort of effectively reduces the density of these developments, of these cluster developments.
Any questions for Matthew at this time? All means?
Just one, the first bullet on the last page, or second to last page, where it says, planning board recommendation would eliminate all density in open space guidance. Can we just rewrite that before it's approved to say, recommendation would be to eliminate a density bonus? Because we're not eliminating open space guidance.
Yeah.
So we're basically saying you can do whatever you want?
No, so the, the guidance was to increase the open space, which was rejected. You're, you're, you're eliminating the guidance to increase open space, as well as the density bonus, which doesn't currently exist, but was proposed.
There's still an open space requirement within the current cluster provisions. But the increased density, but because of the, the lower lot size, it's not density. The increased amount of open space because of the lower lot sizes would exist.
Matthew, could you bring it back a slide for us, please?
Essentially, this, this would basically say, you know, the current cluster standards, you, you would be endorsing the current cluster standard.
Wasn't part of that bullet two, though, as far as prioritizing natural features, isn't that where that verbiage came from?
Could you clarify that?
Bullet two on this page, prioritizing natural features, we, we declined that. So if you could flip forward one, is that where the eliminate all density in open space guidance? Was the guidance referring to the prioritization?
That would be part of it as well, is the guidance is what open space is used for. Yeah, yeah, that was eliminated from this as well.
So I think that's where that came into play.
But, Mr. Berry, I think that your point is there's still, there's still an open space requirement. You still have to have a certain amount of open space in a cluster. space requirement. You still have to have a certain amount of open space in a cluster subdivision.
I hear you. That's not what the Senate says.
No, I understand.
So that was my point. The Senate says we're eliminating all density in open space, and that's not what we're...
Perhaps something in terms of eliminating prioritization of, or something like that?
We can change wording after we give a...
You follow what I'm...
Charlie was instrumental in that. I'm kinda curious what...
All, yeah, all new, yeah, guidance prioritizing term.
Just the people around the development might decide they want to do something different with their property. And if you're looking out on something that somebody else owns, and you're trying to let that development determine what use they're gonna be able to do with that from now on out, I just felt that was incorrect.
So with that in mind, would you have a suggestion on a rewording that first bullet?
I just leave it the heck alone right now. I wouldn't even bother with it. I wouldn't even have those pieces of paper in front of me. That would be my suggestion.
But what do you really think?
I think really essentially what we're asking is, you know, we have those things that were eliminated last month. We looked at it. It looked like, you know, essentially we took, we had the current cluster provision that existed in the ordinance today, that would stay the same. We would just, I guess for like a year, strengthen it by saying, you have to have, we're gonna amend the amenities provision to have those low-impact amenities. You couldn't count pool and tennis courts and all that stuff towards your open space. You can have those things if it doesn't count toward your required open space. So it really strengthens...
So instead of...
If you wanna think of it that way, really, that's what it does.
Instead of these bullet points, perhaps just a statement to maintain current cluster guidelines, with the exception of requiring that active recreation is not included in that calculation?
Excuse me.
And that, yeah, and that's how it would be presented for the county commissioners.
Just one point?
Yeah. We wanted to kind of lay this strategy out, so you could see the full of what we were talking about. But yeah, when it was the board commissioners, we would say, boy, we looked at this, they said no to this, but they endorsed the current standard. We could look at that.
I personally don't see an issue with that. Anyone care to shoot holes in it?
The one thing that I noticed that's not on here is the monitoring for effectiveness. Would that be added to that slide?
Yeah, we could, we could have that.
Monitoring for effectiveness? Any discussion? Any motion? Vice Chair, I don't think I'm supposed to make a motion, so I will say that I'm pretty much fine with what we have here, except for creating one bullet point. And maybe to Mrs. Duda's point, the additional bullet point that was left out, you're maintaining the status quo, with the exception of the passive recreation only, then we're monitoring.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve it as it is with those additions that we asked for.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have any debate or second on that motion? We have a second. All in favor? All opposed? Thank you very much, and thank you, Matthew and Brian.
Yes.
Y'all were troopers, I appreciate it.
Okay. And I think that is all we have for you, this presentation. Are there any other questions of us?
Well, I believe we're good.
Okay.
Blake, bring us the next item, the planning staff report.
A couple items. Bjorn, over the past several weeks, several months, a week, has been working with our communications department. There's gonna be a whole, you know, a new website for the planning department, actually development services department. We wanted to make a nice landing page for folks, because now, if you're trying to coordinate or if you're trying to build houses, whatever, it's a little distracted. You have to go to several different places, and it's not all size, it's not 100% clear. So we're trying to fix a lot of that. You're never gonna make it 100% clear. You can get 95%. Bjorn's done a great job working with our communications staff, and they've pulled that page through.
It's going through the final proofing this week, and we expect to do the press release for it the next week or so. And that will involve both social media, having cards available. That'll be at our various front desks for permitting and the planning department, as well as social media presence, pushing the link out to people who can be concise, web-sited for us. And we will be able to present it, I mean, at a conference meeting, even under the hand, while the new site is set up. It was modeled on Funkland County's site in all places. They created this very tiled, what you want to do type of platform, and it was very cross-disciplinary, so that you didn't have all these silos. Oh, you need to go to public works and figure them out. You need to go to environmental help and figure them out. Every length you need, every form you need is, because you want to subdivide your land, you go to subdivide your land page, and it'll have all that in there. Or I want to file a code enforcement claim. I have a complaint about something. Well, there's at least three different departments you can complain to, depending on what type of complaint it is. People don't care, so you can do that there. And then a records request, whether it's a birth certificate, creative information, all that's right there in the underling tab as well. So we'll hopefully have the ready-for-prime time version of that just in conference meeting.
It just gets back to the county's overall goal of trying to do better at customer service. You don't, you know, none of us like to call and we transfer 18 times, and that happens a lot at the county. We're honestly, took that to heart. We're trying to move away from that. We're trying to make it one for itself. The other item that we'll talk about, some of you know this, some of you don't, the county's 2015 comprehensive plan, won a national award. Not only did it win a national award, it won the best category award, meaning best comprehensive plan, as judged by the National Association of Counties in the nation. So I actually went out, unfortunately Bjorn could go, because he was on vacation, but I went out to Denver a week ago, last week sometime, and accepted that award. That'll be presented to the county commission in September.
Very good.
Very good. All right, that, that being said, we move on to brief comments. Mrs. Duda, you may start.
Just thank you for your time presenting the clusters and the stormwater. Appreciate your time always. I like being on the board here, so thank you.
Good. Mr. McGally?
I have nothing to say.
Mr. Griffin?
Nothing.
Mr. Harrison?
Nothing.
Thank you all again.
Nothing.
All right. Well, my only comment was in regards to that award. Excellent work to the whole planning staff. Thank you all for what you do. You are truly a world-class organization. That being said, do I have a motion to adjourn? There we go. Good night, everybody. It is 8:18, and we are adjourned.